Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled Planning Commission, Simsbury, Connecticut, Tuesday, May 9, 2017. So I'd like to thank SCTV for recording these proceedings. And if you would all join me, rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Take a quick roll call. Holly Bem?
Here.
Robert Kulikowski. Bob indicated this afternoon that he would not be attending. Aaron Levitt Smith.
Here.
Bob McAndrow, absent. Alan Needham. I don't remember him telling me that he wasn't going to be here, but he is not here. William Rice?
There he is.
Alan Needham?
Oh, it was just taking.
Present.
Everybody's early.
It's seven.
On time.
Is it okay? Elizabeth Burt is excused in advance. Mark Drake is absent. Gary Lungarini?
Here.
Present. Gary, I'd like to ask you to assume the seat of a full Commission member this evening.
Sure.
And gives us five commissioners, which meets the minimum, or actually more than the minimum for a quorum. So we are free to conduct business. Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 25, 2017 regular meeting. In Mr. Kulikowski's absence, we'll root through the minutes. So, Planning Commission minutes from regular meeting, April 25, 2017. Any comments on page one? Any comments on page two? Page three? Page four? Okay. I make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Submit.
Have second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention, Mr. Rabbit. Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, no, no.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. We have no open public hearings. No need to open any public hearings. No new applications. Is that still the case, Mr. Rabbit?
Correct.
So no applications to receive. Under new business, we do have a couple referrals. First one is for a text amendment. So under CGS 8-3A, referral to the zoning, I think it's to the Planning Commission. On zoning commission application 17-16, Lisa Nacherian and Chris Illiard, agents for a proposed text amendment to section 4.2, this is of the zoning regulations, allowed use table, and section 4.3.3, commercial use categories of the Simsbury Center Code to create an additional allowed use titled "Small Event Center." Okay, do we have any?
We do not have the applicant present, Mr. Chairman, but I can give you a brief explanation of the text amendment.
Okay.
The property that this is associated with is Fiddler's Green. You have new owners who have acquired that and they were looking for a new use or new commercial use of the existing Victorian home. Victorian portion of that property was used in residential man. They were looking to utilize that in new commercial venture. They would like to name Storytellers College. And as they explored the potential uses of that Victorian home as a commercial space, as a small event center that could host, I'll say bridal showers, or small events, whether it be a corporate function, an event to celebrate a date or someone's milestone, as well as potentially having puzzle rooms, or mystery rooms, or game rooms on the second floor. The provisions of the Form-Based Code, typically Form-Based Codes are just that, but Simsbury has a hybrid of a traditional Form-Based Code, which includes a use table. And the use tables call out first-floor uses and second-floor uses. There's a term in the Form-Based Code that calls out for indoor recreation. Indoor recreation, however, is only allowed on the first floor. So even if zoning came to the conclusion that an event center, or a mystery room, or puzzle room fell within the category of a indoor recreational facility, you still couldn't, you were precluded from doing it on the second floor. So in discussions with owner of the property, it was suggested that they propose a text amendment to solidify the definition of what they were trying to do, and also solidify whether you could undertake those activities on the first and/or second floor. The result of that is a proposed text amendment, and its purpose or intention is for a small event space, which could be the rental of the floor or both floors. It'd be an asset ultimately to the building. If the zoning regulations change, it still requires site plan approval by the zoning commission, and if there is to be the sale of alcohol, it requires a special exception, application through the zoning regulations to allow the sale of alcohol, or distribution of alcohol on a property. So the primary change is solidifying the proposed use of the property as it fits into one of the categories contained in the use table.
But they're talking which? Next to the?
So on Fiddler's Green, you have?
Next to Joe Pizza, that's what I thought.
You have Joe Pizza, and then you have the Victorian?
That's what I thought, okay.
Well, from the street, it plays as a Victorian facade.
Yes.
Behind that Victorian facade is the original Victorian home.
Okay.
That was rehabbed or updated as a single-family home, and was used for a number of years as a single-family residence. They're looking to convert that back to commercial.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And under the current regs, there really was no category for an event center. You know, you could hold a wedding, you could hold a graduation party, you could hold a mystery ballgame, but not on our regulations. It didn't offer, unless the commission came to the conclusion that, and that's where evolved the simple recreation. But under no circumstances did regulations allow that type of activity on the second floor. Basically, the way the Form-Based Code is set up is first-floor retail, office space, second-floor residential, with some exclusions of office and other spaces.
This encompasses both first and second floor for this whole thing, though, right?
Will potentially allow event space on both the first and second floor.
Is there a reason why they're 49? Is it, if they go to 50, is that a different?
There was a discussion on changes in the fire code, which affect the building code.
Okay.
When you go to Assembly about?
Okay.
So this descrip? Even though that's in the provisions, there's still maybe the potential that there's a first-floor activity and a second-floor activity that from a building code, fire code perspective, still triggers improvements to the building because the occupancy exceeds it. Because even if you have events at 49, that means no staff is there. So if you have 49 individuals and six staff members, the occupancy of those 55, and you now trigger another code compliance issue.
If new mixed-use dwellings are built, say, on Iron Horse, and they're commercial on the first floor and residential on the second, this wouldn't apply?
No, it will apply in general to any?
It would.
Just SC1 zones? So with it, there's five zones within the Simsbury Center Code, it's only for the SC1.
And SC1 is?
Maybe 25 to 35 percent of the downtown.
Okay. All around Redstone, this place?
Without looking at the map?
But it's all in there. It exists in zones.
Yeah, I always worry about, what about, for example, Vincent's has a second floor, is that in the zone? Could they do this with Vincent's too?
Again, if they're in the SC1, yes.
Yes, they could. So anybody in SC1 could do the same?
Yes. And I think for clarity? So originally clarity, when you look at indoor recreation, and the timeframe that these regs were developed, indoor recreation was kind of like the gaming facility, the bowling alley type, the pool hall type, and you could see where they developed a provision to not allow, in essence, a bowling alley on the second floor, or a pool hall on the second floor, or some other type of indoor recreation on the second floor. Yet they allowed medical offices and other types of offices on the second floor. But it was just bringing that entertainment-type facility to the second floor within the downtown. This still will not allow indoor recreation on the second floor, it will only allow an event-type center to have activities on the second floor. Because again, one of the original discussions was, we'll just change the Simsbury Center Code and say indoor recreation is allowed on the second floor.
This portion of the Simsbury's?
Example. Where again, the discussion was, is the original intent for zoning was to keep those types of activities limited to the first floor.
I'm sorry.
To just allow these types of event centers on first and second floors.
So the zoning district, the question is this pink, the light pink, which is mainly Hoppe Street, the corners of some of the?
So there's like tall buildings.
So Victorian is, here's Eno Hall right next to it. This is it right here. Oh, sorry. Come on, sorry.
It's basically everything.
Hoppe Street. Anything on Iron Horse, as you asked earlier, it's a different sub-district. Could have been the center zone.
And most of the corners of intersections, or street intersections, are also subcategories.
Okay, and it's only the eastern side looks like?
Yes, right? Yes.
Oh, I see, yeah, because from a distance, I couldn't tell the difference.
No, some of the crossroads on the west side are also SC1. Like Hill, for example.
Again, look, you really have to hone in on the map. But again, in those areas, you're allowed to have indoor recreation. They potentially would qualify for indoor recreation on the first floor, and not on the second.
If you bought a description that it is indoor recreation?
The commission would have to come to the conclusion that a puzzle room is indoor recreation. I think they would have been hard pressed to say that a wedding shower rental banquet facility was indoor recreation, and that didn't fall into office or medical or, you know. And again, that's what real traditional Form-Based Codes are just Form-Based, they don't have a use table.
Yeah.
You decide that commercial uses are allowed in an area based, so long as they meet the criteria contained within the Form, what's inside of the building is less important. Again, Simsbury has a hybrid, because there was some uncertainty. We're okay with the Form, so long as these uses are within the building, but not these other uses.
The block.
Some would view it as restrictive, and some would view it as another protective layout.
So it's always, one of the issues is unintended consequences.
And that's why the original discussion with the landowner was, I think there may be potentially unintended consequences if you just move indoor recreation to the second Versus defining a particular use which would be limited to, or potentially even allowed on the first floor by just moving the event type to the second floor.
Can't see puzzle rooms coming up.
Oh, that's the new thing. It's the big hot new thing, yeah.
But I'm not sure a downtown can support multiple venues with puzzles. You may see one or two. Usually, there's typically one of those venues in a community of Simsbury's size.
We don't have one yet, though.
No, but I believe Farmington, either Farmington or Avon does.
Farmington does.
Farmington.
Down by the wooden tap. Torrington does. Where Plin tins is.
Right. Yeah, Carrie, I mentioned that Torrington as well.
I just wanted to, we had to have a discussion.
Again, primary issues, you determine inconsistency with your 207 POC.
One of the things that I feel strongly about the POCD is we try to encourage good use, good commercial use of things, commercial development, and I think this type of a facility, especially in that particular building, would be an enhancement for Simsbury.
How about if it was an other building, still on the town? Although?
You mean like Andy's? It's got a very narrow use source.
Yeah. You'd have to get people who want to hold a wedding, you could do it in Andy's.
I always have trouble with text amendments. I always have trouble tailoring regulations for a particular place and a particular idea. That's always a trouble somewhere. On the other hand?
But the first day you adopt the zoning code, you're doing it.
What's that?
The first day you adopt the zoning code, in fact, you are doing that.
Right, the text amendment, what kind of rigors does that go through before it's accepted into the regulations?
Referral to you for consistency with the POCD. The zoning commissions require the whole of public hearing on the state statute, so they will take public testimony based on the proposal. Public hearing would close, the commission would deliberate, and then the commission takes action. That only puts the language in the text. It doesn't grant approval for any particular development. It just allows someone to apply. Someone would still have to apply within the Simsbury Center Code for a particular use. That use is a little more administrative, so long as they meet the Form on this particular building, it's built infrastructure, a rule. With the proposal, it's site plan approval, we need to evaluate parking, we need to evaluate access, we need to evaluate any health aspects, as it's related to the preparation of food. So the Farmington Valley Health Department would be involved, fire marshal would be involved as well as the building official during the site plan approval process. If they propose to sell alcohol under the Simsbury Center Code, as well as your zoning reg, the town's zoning regulations, the sale or distribution of alcohol on any property in town in a permanent manner requires a special exception, which requires a hearing.
You know, it's hard to start a business in this town.
Yeah, so there are, there is a process. The site plan approval is a little more administrative, meet the form, meet the parking requirement. And in a downtown scenario, it's a mix of onsite and offsite. So here, they may look at taking credit for some existing spaces on Hoppe Meadow, some existing overflow spaces that would be available on the state lots, which the town has rights to utilize through, I remember, the state in a shared scenario. But as we move forward, we're trying to keep track of the shared nature of the parking. So at some point in time, you don't have 10 businesses laying claim to the same 10 spots.
At the same time.
At the same time. And I think we've had experiences like that in other shoreline communities like the Grine or Stone Temple. But there are also other communities like Pawtucket Island, who eliminated their parking requirements in the downtown. Because without doing that, how could you ever open a new business in an existing building that had no land other than the land the building had? How do you supply parking? When there's municipal parking and outdoor street parking in the downtown? So if you want a community that grows, some communities that make the choice to just eliminate parking requirements in the downtown.
So it's not a POCD issue, but the baking of goods, this just has a residential kitchen?
It has a residential kitchen, but they could make upgrades to allow it to function as a commercial kitchen. A lot of the items associated with a commercial kitchen are venting, food prep areas, and food storage. Storage, you know, food can't be stored within six inches of a pool. Your refrigeration units have to be, you know, commercially viable and full temperature. You need prep areas that have a non-mechanical surface, which is a pretty stainless steel. So there are certain aspects, like even though the existing property may not have it, doesn't mean they can't upgrade it. Also doesn't mean that, you know, one of the aspects of the discussion is, someone may want to host cooking classes there. But if you're doing cooking classes, that may kick you to a kitchen, and they may need to make some upgrades to that kitchen in order to get their health. You just can't do it enough. They have to get other appropriate permits. But saying that it's allowed in the regs means they can't submit an application to potentially acquire permitting. Noted in the regulations, remember, regs are permissive in nature. If it's not listed as something that is allowed, it is prohibited by its omission.
Well, what's the status of the update or revision of the zoning regulations?
With regards to the update of the zoning regulations, we're not changing, we weren't proposing to change anything with the Simsbury Center Code with regards to this.
Okay, so could this be rolled, considered to be rolled into that effort now?
There would be a significant time lag.
That is, if we waited until the regulations were updated, as opposed to the process of applying for now?
I would say, if the stop was incorporating a change, the change would be very similar with regards to the proposal before.
So, Tom Planner, this kind of thinking is apt to lead to a busier, more robust town center, which you sort of have?
I, I mean, you have to look at regulations as not bendable, reapplyable, not a stagnant code. If we were sitting here, if we got on a time machine and went back 10 years and asked everybody, what's a puzzle room, what's a mystery room? Probably all had blank spaces, you know, expressions on your face, but I mentioned puzzle rooms and mystery rooms, and Holly, you mentioned, well, there's one in Torrington, Aaron. I'm like, Aaron, there's, I think there's one in Farmington or Avon. And you're like, no, Jamie, it's in Farmington, and I know where it is. But 10 years ago, if we were writing a code, we would never anticipate this type of use. So here we are in 2017. There's a new type of business that allows maybe a good commercial mix in a downtown, reuse of space that may otherwise be unused, someone who's willing to make a capital investment in the community that could be viewed as having minimal impact.
Preserve beautiful.
And again, have economic return on a property that perhaps would struggle in another man. I mean, it's a beautiful, single-family home. You walk in, I think it's a four-square building, being two front rooms, two back rooms with an offset kitchen. Makes a great single-family house, doesn't necessarily make a great office. Or it makes a great law office, but it's not easily subdivided into four offices, one real estate, one attorney, one accountant. So how do you allow a little bit of bend in your regulations, or fluctuation in your regulations, to accommodate changes of use and changes in a business code? Again, in a traditional Form-Based Code, you wouldn't even be having this conversation because they would meet the form. The use would be commercial, allowed in the zone. But because you, the town chose to have uses that are permitted, and if you're not in that category, you're not permitted, you know, you have these gray areas some, sometimes.
So this proposed text amendment is to take away some of the ambiguity and give the property owner some confidence?
Give the property owner confidence that their potential use would be interpreted as an event center and not?
Indoor recreation.
Unique interpretation of a classic term of indoor recreation. Because again, the other thing is that if you start modifying your interpretation of indoor recreation, I think that's where you have potential failure in the system. Because indoor recreation, in essence, is that pool hall, bowling alley type thing, and all of a sudden, someone says, well, it's also a puzzle. And then someone else says, well, I have this other use, maybe it's associated with some personal services. Well, I want to call it indoor recreation. Versus saying, indoor recreation is pool, gaming, and others, and personal services is not indoor recreation, and it's not an event center. So in some instances, it brings more clarity to the uses allowed in the zone.
Would this allow daycare on the second floor?
No, it's not an event center.
So it's after-school activities for children?
That's not a daycare. Daycare's defined in our regulations also. A child care is defined, not a word. My expression is, is when we modify regulations, you, you know, from my point, a wise planner told me before, never open Pandora's box, crack the box. So you're not wholesale changing, you know, careful what you wish for, interpretations can be broad on some future time with different staff and different commissions. Try and make your visions clear so that they're only targeted for specific uses, unless they're intended for outdoor uses. Alan, if you said, I think, you know, event centers should also include daycare, you know, that should be a broad discussion. But we do have other discussions.
Just wanted to make sure this is how, who they care.
Their intent is the ability to have math tutoring classes after school, that someone could have a room dedicated to tutoring.
Yeah, I was just afraid another site with this, say, interpret it as a daycare on the second floor.
But daycare's covered within our regulations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move, make a positive referral to the zoning commission, on zoning commission application for 17-16.
We have a motion. Have second?
Second.
Seconded by Aaron. We have any discussion? I think I'd like to just add to the motion that the elements of the POCD that support this decision would fall under economic development, okay? And also improve in our special areas, of which the Simsbury Town Center is one.
That's nice call.
It'd be a lot easier with the POC.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have amended motion. Mr. Rabbit, did you capture that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's okay?
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just for clarity, the motion as, as the chairman proposed a slight amendment to, Aaron, you had the second, and Holly made the motion, and you're modifying the motion to include Mr. Rice's language.
So I second modification.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the positive referral to the, or quoting positive fashion for the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Let's hope it works out. Alan, with you. I haven't come to terms yet with these text amendments.
Incremental.
You know, very, very kind of self-serving in nature.
We approved a sign for eight person, we did that, we didn't, but that occurred once. Just felt like nick in a way, and what we thought was a good idea. Except this, on the other hand, I see as a brilliant student at Town Center, this seems like a way to improve. Make it a little more vigorous, just hope some wise guy doesn't come up with another way to ease a man out of this. But you're saying that that would be a valuable? But you're saying that, that that would be a value.
Again, that's why we try and write, or recommend that applicants write distinct, clear language that may appear extremely focused, but that focus serves a purpose. Well, this seems less dangerous than indoor recreation. Indoor recreation is potentially a very broad term.
Yeah, I'd say so.
Well, I think it's a great idea, a good addition to the town.
Yeah, Bill, I understand your thought about it feels subservient, however, in order to bring in new business, people, I mean, this is what they have to do, so I, I get what you're saying. But, but by the same token, if someone is doing it to add value, yes, they're doing it because they want to expand their business, but it could have value to the town.
I don't think we're worried about this.
No.
Somebody else is doing something.
But again, Jamie, there's all these checks and balances that doesn't mean it's going to give somebody a blank check to be able to go in. They're going to have to go through that process.
We've learned.
Yeah.
No, I know, but it's. Did you know where we are on the P O C D?
Nope, we have.
Oh, sorry, we're not there.
We have another referral. So next order of business is a referral from the Board of Selectmen regarding the town of Simsbury fiscal year 1718 proposed capital improvement plan. Okay, so I was speaking with Mr. Gooden earlier, and it was confirmed that the proposal that we have, that's been submitted to us, is for the next year, or start July, July 1st, okay? And this is the one that will be on the budget referendum in June. These cap, these capital improvements are the ones that exceed some value.
Yes.
Right? My other question was, I had heard a lot of discussion about either postponing or canceling the number of capital improvement programs. Does this submitted list reflect that?
What you have before you, under your eight dash 24 referral, reflects the latest information that's moving forward, with the small caveat that the Selectmen did need last night. And there may have been a few modifications to that. Just from a budget standpoint, the Borra Finance had asked for an essence of a $1 million reduction in the initial budget proposed by Borra Bed and the Selectmen. That basically broke down to a $200,000 reduction on the municipal side and an $800,000 deduction on the educational side. The Board of Selectmen made some slight adjustments last night, some from operational and some from capital. I didn't get an opportunity to talk to Jeff today on the exact capital items that were pushed off. I know from some of the items within public works that Simsbury was in a road improvement mode, and given some of the budget constraints, they're now in a road maintenance move, mode. So they don't want any of the town assets to deteriorate, but they don't have the resources to improve the assets they have. And again, that's just due to a budget cycle. You know, some of the cuts we're planning had 2,500 or 2,600 from our overall budget cut on line item bases, but not capital. And so there were slight adjustments in, one project may have been pushed off, but I'd say the senior center, I believe, is still intact and other significant projects in progress.
Henry James.
Henry James is still.
So I don't know if the commissioners got a chance to look through this in detail, but I noticed two, two big-ticket items. One was the senior center, $5.8 million or something like that, shown in fiscal year 18. My, my question is.
It wasn't in the.
Nope. So that, that total amount is shown in fiscal year 18.
But on, on Eno, there was an original set of, set aside in FY17 for the senior center, at like 5.8, which is 6 million. So that will improve, probably 5.8 million. Now, it's improved last year. The site has moved. So although you see the missed years' capital plan, it was also in last year's capital.
Well, was it bonded last year? Not that.
They were authorized to bond for, what, what this does is set out a capital plan that allows the community to enter into indebtedness or the bonding, if those projects were forward. But they need authorization from both the Planning Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and ultimately, town meeting, not approval of the budget. Now, again, your, your role is to look at the projects with regards to consistency of the 207 P O C D.
Well, you definitely flagged the concern I had with the P O C D. I've never been a part of the discussions that decided that this would be such a wonderful enhancement for our downtown. I keep thinking there's a number of other empty buildings or buildings that will be empty downtown that might not involve such extensive work on, on a classic building for our downtown.
That's not really what. We have.
No, that's the P O C D we're talking about.
We have explored other opportunities in the downtown as it relates to vacant, unperforming, or potentially available properties, and those did not completely move through the process for a whole story. And some in unreal estate expectations of financial return, others were the site's not big enough, or it won't accommodate. Again, it's one of those things, you may be able to invest, I'll say five, but you're done and you won't have any ability to expand in the future. Or you may be able to invest eight, because you need to acquire more land than you need now, but you have to acquire the entire property, you can't only acquire half of it. So the expenditures.
Well, not being privy to any of those deliberations, I still find it hard to believe that this is the only solution we can find by distorting a historical.
The historical.
I know, and by committee, I know what looking at committees is all about, that charter.
Maybe, maybe, you know, our, our commission's responsibility is to determine if we feel that a senior center or a community center is the right thing to start with, not necessarily where it goes, but is that consistent with the P O C D?
Ultimately, where it goes, we'll come back to you under eight dash 24, and a significant improvement to a municipal building. And that's where you may be able to determine the appropriateness of something on a specific site in a specific form. Versus, Bill, I think you're looking at the P O C D level is there's a capital budget item in here for a senior center. There's a capital budget item in here to update a school. Are those consistent with the goals and objectives of the P O C D? Holly, you're kind of getting down to the site plan aspects associated with final location.
Well, I'm just referring to maintaining the character of the town center.
Yeah, that's, that could be a balance.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking of, that's all I'm thinking of. You know, I mean, the other big-ticket item is, is I can't see that it's inconsistent with the P O C D, but this one I've, again, not being privy to any of the discussions, I still find it hard to believe, that's why. And again, that charter review committee shows what committee work is capable of, and I rest my case.
So Gary, do you see any projects in here that would conflict with the Plan of Conservation and Development?
Yeah, I really don't.
Aaron?
I like it, what Holly's saying about Eno. Holly?
Yeah, I think it's a crying shame we did that. It's a beautiful building to.
Design.
To tack.
Oh, you know, we can probably tough that up in more detail, if and when the application is referred to us.
Yeah.
I think a lot of more influence there. Alan, what do you think?
No, I don't have a problem with this.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you are entertaining a motion to make a determination that the capital improvement plan or program for FY18 is consistent with the town's P O C D, I would ask you to kind of put a caveat on that, along with that motion, if bond council needs specific language to plug that into and wordsmith that a little bit for bonding purposes, then.
We would take them up.
The, the intent is that you're making a recommendation that is consistent with the P O C D. There may be a few adjectives and adverbs added to the beginning and end of those sentences.
It's a very nice building in town that looks like an abomination.
I think, I think the proposed capital projects are very consistent with the Plan of Conservation and Development dated 2007. Anyone want to make a motion?
Chairman, you can't?
No, I can. I move that we give a, this is a referral, right, Mr. Rapp? We give a positive referral pertaining to the capital improvement projects that were submitted for the fiscal year 2018, on the basis that we find that they are all consistent with the 2007 Plan of Conservation and Development, and that if certain entities need additional reference to specific sections of the P O C D, we can supply that on an as-needed basis.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Alan.
Just for clarity, in my original statement, I understand your motion, bond council needs to add a leading sentence and a follow-up sentence to that for the purposes of bonding, you're comfortable with that?
To this motion, or?
To this motion. So if the, the legal language needs to say, whereas the town of Simsbury's Planning Commission comes to the following conclusion and makes a positive referral pertaining to the CIP plan, finding it consistent with the 2007 P O C D, whereas on May 9th, you're okay if that wordsmith, if we need to tack that.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
I know in previous years in other municipalities, sometimes bond commission has, ends up with very specific language, like you don't have access to that.
Can we get the chairman the authority to add language?
I would run any modification of language at the head of any document to.
Yeah, so before.
To be done in concert with the chair.
So we have a motion, any discuss, and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so Holly, then, was in opposition. Any abstentions? No abstentions.
Seconded was Alan.
Alan, the other.
Sorry.
Okay, good. So now the next order of business is P O C D. However, just one, one, grant me a minute here, Glenn. Jamie, you submitted a good correspondence to us, refer, referencing public hearings, continuations of public hearings. Familiar with this? Could you, could you explain it to me a little bit?
You want to get that?
Yeah, it was in the Dropbox.
It was in the box, yeah, so. It was by, by Bob, you know, to you, talking about notice of a continued public hearing is not required. The court also held that the requirements for the open, opening of a public hearing do not require the taking of testimony.
That's a part of it. Here, here's what the issue, I'll, I'll try and clarify that. Two aspects to his legal letter to you. What the case said is, on a number of occasions, you will have a public hearing associated with, we'll say a subdivision that comes before you. And two days before that public hearing is scheduled to open, we get a request from the applicant to table discussion on the subdivision because they're unable to attend the meeting at that time. So you come to a meeting like tonight, you're required by statute to open the hearing, and the public's here. And staff or you have a letter and you say, you know, I want to inform the public that the applicant has requested that we table his application, and I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to next month. And someone in public says, I'm here, I'm going to speak. What Bob's telling you is that as a commission, you have the right to say, we're not taking any public testimony tonight. We're continuing this hearing to another date. What the argument was in that case is, you don't have the right to do that. Bob's saying, yes, you.
Courts have, courts have decided.
Courts have decided that you do have that right. You have the right to determine when testimony is taken.
Bearing in mind that it's a crappy way to treat the citizenry.
The second aspect of that is, if you're continuing a hearing, someone has argued that you need to republish notice. And what the courts have affirmed is, you do not need to publish notice again. When that hearing is continued, you just need to state time, place, date before you close those proceedings for the year. So again, in my scenario, if you're opening a hearing tonight, the applicant asks it to be tabled, and you said, we're not going to take any testimony, motion to table it to our next regularly scheduled meeting, that's not enough. Our next regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM on this date in the main meeting room of the town hall. The courts have affirmed that, that is sufficient for legal notice. You do not have to notice it again in a paper. And that's consistent with the way the courts have ruled in the past.
Okay. Clear enough? So now we can get on to general commission's business, P O C D, discussion on draft. Welcome, Mr. Chalder.
Good evening.
Okay, we missed your last meeting. We had a little bit of discussion, not much. Okay? And the instructions to the commissioners were to come to this meeting prepared to discuss sections of the draft that we haven't talked about before.
So the key thing I think is important to, for us to talk about or set the context, if you will, is that because of our projected public hearing date, and then moving backwards, our, our schedule anticipates a public informational meeting in June, about a month from now. So if we don't get through the plan tonight, we're either going to have to schedule an intermediate meeting, or we're going to have to push off the public informational meeting, and it's whatever the commission is comfortable with. Our target date is for adoption, the 2007 plan was.
November. Yeah, but that, but we, you pushed that off a little bit. We were in on late October.
Yeah, so the, the trickiest thing in the overall schedule is there's a 65-day notice period. So even if we were to go till November and then schedule a public hearing in September, you know, it gets a little bit dicey with summertime, but just, that's the overall schedule that we're kind of working with. My notes have us discussing the draft plan up through page 30. Do you have us starting on page 31?
So the public information session, do we have that penciled in as a motion for a date?
I, I had anticipated our normal meeting date in June, because I figured we already had that boxed out.
Yeah, June 12th.
But you got a lot of.
June 12th.
June, is it June 12th?
So it'd be the first meeting in June. Does that have to be a way to second, I guess?
Yeah, our regular meeting date in June is the second, too. So, yeah, I have us down for June 13th.
June 13th?
Tuesday, June 13th. It'd be our normal meeting date, and that would be perhaps a great day for the public informational meeting that the commission probably already.
Would we put that in a bigger venue, Jamie? Would we put that in a bigger venue, Jamie?
Yes. Again, plan for significant comment and attendance and, you know, Glenn can probably fill in on this. On some occasions, you plan to have it in the school auditorium and you have 15 individuals show up. Another time, you're anticipating that a room like this will suffice and you have 50 come. It's somewhat unpredictable, so I would plan for a larger venue, just in case.
So something like the library, I think you have to get two months in advance, right?
We will, once we solidify those days, we'll, between library, Eno, Henry James, high school, we should be able to acquire a venue.
Okay, so I think we're pretty much settled for the 13th, June 13th.
I think we'll shoot for that and I think my goal would be that as soon as we have finished our discussion, Jim's already shared some of his comments with me in terms of grammar typing, et cetera. I've taken care of some of those, to get the updated plan completed ASAP so that we can get it published on the town website so that we can have plenty of chance to review it. So try to have a meaningful public input session.
All right, page 30.
Yep.
31, preserve open space. So I'm going on to 32. I was approached by a member of the Open Space Committee who expressed their desire for the town to continue acquiring open space. I explained to that person that certainly the revised POCD will most likely, and I hope, carry language to that effect, however, it might be more strategic in nature. Yep, and so the person agreed with that, but now I know who it is.
Well, I think I had a conversation with the same person, I think we understood.
We'll see. So one, one thing I noted on page 32, in the, in the left-hand margin, was that I was surprised, it's just numbers, okay, but a telephone survey, Simsbury should try to acquire more land for open space and parks. If you add up agree and strongly agree, that gives you 60%. And if you add up agree and disagree, that's 70%. Why did I do that? I guess I was surprised at the, the magnitude of disagree.
Well, I think that can be a reflection of a bunch of different things. The overall economy, issues of priorities in terms of where people feel that the town's attention should be paid. Economic development was one of the highest-scoring issues, if you will. So people might be saying, you know what, I want to take a pause here and not stop spending money and I want us to figure out ways to make money. So it is a snapshot in time. As I surveyed these results here, my response or my reaction was 60% either agree or strongly agree and about 33% disagree. So it's still a two-to-one margin to acquire open space. You're never going to get 100% unanimity, but a two-to-one margin is, if we were betting people and...
Pretty good.
Tucky Ducky's coming up, coming up again.
Sounds like the French election.
So I think that there is support for open space in town. I don't have historic information, I have to look back and see if there's other surveys before whether it's higher or lower than it's been. So again, I still think there's interest in town in open space, but it needs to be balanced with other priorities.
And I think though what the town has done is, we've used the term strategic. And I think historically, the town has been strategic and significant acquisitions within the community. At the Walker, the Land Trust has been strategic in some of their acquisitions. And what you look at as a planning commission is to be strategic where it makes sense. And some of these isolated acre here, two acres there, four acres there. Is there any strategy to the acquisition of these isolated parcels versus pooling those resources and making a more strategic, dynamic purchase or upgrade to artistic open space, which I think Glenn addresses on page 34, B1, which, which talks about your role as the planning commission and subdivision to ensure that the development makes provisions for the preservation of open space at the time of development by either preserving or giving a dedication fee. So it doesn't necessarily steer you in a particular direction, but it's going to that strategic focus of where it makes the most sense.
Yeah. Throughout this, here and there, people have asked me questions and so I like, once in a while, I want to say, should we? Doesn't mean you're advocating something, it's just being a question. So in that vein, on page 32, the question, because of a path not too far from where we live, we use all the time. At one point, the developer said he would maintain the path and I'm not sure who owns the property. Right along the canal, Route 10, by Canalway. I'm not sure who owns that, but I'm sure at some point the developer said he would maintain that.
The path and canal, the trail.
Trail, how?
To.
If you go down Canalway and park your car, the canal's sitting right there. There's a path on either side. And that, I think, was done by the developer. Okay? And my question is, is it appropriate to have some kind of language in here that says that if you agree to maintain something like that, now if that's public space, I don't know, should we mention that, that, have some kind of language about that? That is, if you agree to maintain something that the public uses, should we say something about that?
So I just, without meaning to jump ahead, but I think it's, it's touched on a little bit on page 38. So on page 38, recommendation strategy 6.3 in the plan is manage, maintain, and enhance open space areas. And we talked about effectively managing open space resources. It starts off in item 1B, says create management plans for town-owned open space areas in order to give them the attention they may need. What may make sense there is that is seen below that, which is that, you know, if open space is going to be kept in private hands or something else that encourages those management plans to come in.
I'm just thinking, I'd rather was going to enforce it, but I think it's just good to have.
Three below that on page 30 talks about enforcement and follow-through.
On 38?
38, item A, writing adequate resources to maintain open space resources and monitor and enforce protected even when used as a possibility. And that kind of gets to your point, someone said they would do something and all the tools they were following through.
Anything else, 32, 33?
34. 4B, 2A, B, and C. I'm just wondering how you came up with the percentages, Glenn? And, you know, I didn't know 50% was high.
It's a carryover, 50% is a carryover from the 2007.
Okay.
The statutes do contain some language about conservation developments or open space subdivisions, whatever they're called. In all honesty, I'm not a huge fan of a rigid 50% number because there's times that our normal open space outside is 20%. We could have a subdivision come along very well-designed and have 30% open space. It's gorgeous, it does everything we want it to do, but it's not 50%. So the question is, are we able to kind of get a better outcome than we might get in a conventional approach? So I think the plan is advisory, it's aspirational. So I think, you know, we can run with the language that says to require as much as 50% and then it becomes a bit of kind of a reach goal for us.
All right.
And I think it could be okay.
Which is the way you have there?
Yeah.
Okay. I feel more comfortable, because 50 just sounded high.
Well, I think in this discussion could happen here in this commission in terms of the subdivision regulations or with zoning in terms of a conservation subdivision, what should the percentage be? There are communities that have different types of approaches and we can have that conversation when the time comes to adopt something.
And the same with B, you put as much as, okay.
So in B2, first bullet, it's, it says at least 20% open space in the conventional subdivision. Now, I always have to reread this, but I seem to think our existing regulations say up to 20%. I think it says, I think at, at our discretion.
Be reminded what your regulations say exactly.
Define it. So it says, the planning commission, at its discretion, may require the preservation of open space in any subdivision as a conditional approval. The open space land shall be set aside for use as open space parks, playgrounds, as provided in Connecticut general statutes. Except as noted in... Okay, except as provided under the adopted fee in lieu of open space amendment. The open space land up to 20% of the total parcel. Hold on, shall not have a greater percentage of weapons, water courses, maybe that's what I was thinking about.
Your regs are set up in a proportional manner so that if you have a 100-acre tract and 50's wet, 50's dry, someone can't give you 20 acres of weapons. You would have to give 10 in a proportional way.
So given what Jamie's just said, I think 2C on this list probably comes out because it sounds like we're doing this already. Do you agree?
I, I, I agree in part, Glenn. I think there, there needs to be some word smithing to the open space regs. I mean, you make the same comment in 3A before modifying the subdivision regulations to incorporate provisions related to fee in lieu of open space. You do, but you have two sections associated with the fee in lieu of open space. One follows a state statute, one runs to the left of what state statute allows you to do by setting an actual amount.
So if we leave this in, if there's any rewrite of regulations later, we have this to...
To say, yes, we want that rewrite.
You are rewriting your fee in lieu of open space regs because your POCD recommended that you are. And aspects of that, you're also looking at the proportionality issue to make sure that's clearly written. And again, as Bill's going through it, he's reading and having to reread.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To understand. And in our capital improvement, we have funds for FY18 for looking at our subdivision regulations as well as the town's public improvement standards.
So I think based on this conversation, the 2C and 3B should both be modified to ensure that they are both clearly written. Ensure the proportionality factor is clearly written, ensure the fee in lieu of...
Exactly, yeah.
20%, 20%, minimum, max, up to?
Up to. So on page 35, pursue creation of a state park at Terracille Gorge.
Is that a carryover or is it...
I think it would be, yes.
Yeah.
Never heard much about that.
No.
I do too.
Trap Rock Bridges.
You're going to give it to somebody that's broken?
Oh, you mean now? That's not going to happen. Well, I'm alive. It's nice to hear that.
But what's the advantage of making it a state park?
Maintain. Theoretically. You ever been down there? A little rough down there.
Terracille, wait a minute. If you go down, help the street.
By the ball field? That's what I'm thinking. That dirt road past the ball field.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the gorge is essentially from the Bloomfield line backwards, past the mill. And it might even extend into Bloomfield and East Grantby. I mean, I think that the concept here, it's, it is a fairly unique resource in the state if you have it. It would be challenging and difficult for each individual town to be able to put something together that made a meaningful haul. On the other hand, the state, if they had the resources or bonded it or whatever they did, might be in a position to create a multi-town feature that actually ties into the Greenway Trail and Terracille Spur. You know, there was some discussion of the Continental Bridge over the gorge. There's all sorts of stuff that over the very long term could make it an incredible...
Oh, I think it's, yeah, beautiful geologic, you know, piece of land, but...
It also potentially helps in a land acquisition scenario. The estate may have funds available at some point to acquire pieces or parts of the area. And your goal would be, ultimately, we have a recommendation in here to make it a state, state park, which alludes to acquisition by someone. The start of that could be acquisition by the towns that ultimately could be disposed of to the state as part of the state park. So I think it still achieves an overall goal of protecting the area in some manner and recognizing the unique geological...
And the link between multi, multi-municipalities.
So pursue may not be the right verb there, I'm wondering if promote.
Promote might be better.
Pursue is not within our, our wheelhouse type of thing, but promote is. Okay? Sorry, Alan, you were...
Number three.
Yep.
Seek to establish greenway corridors along the trap rock bridges, those are the... Okay? But along, is that mean along the top, along the bottom?
No, I meant, I was thinking, as I read it in a linear fashion, the little diagram, the schematic diagram on page 33. I realized this, this diagram's going to be better if I actually labeled what these colored lines are, so I'm going to go ahead and do that. But the whole idea would be that we have these tremendous north-south resources that when you're up there and you're looking out over the valley, how remarkable it is. And we also have the Farmington River in the middle and then if you could figure out ways to interconnect between the two, that that would be a significant open space system for us.
But you're talking about the floor of the valley and not the top of the valley?
I, I, we're both, no, it, it could be. I mean, I think that the Metacoma Trail, you know, is a tremendous walk, so tying that, recognizing that we have that there, not all of it's on public property, some of it is. If we, if we could figure out a way to tie all of these resources together and become known for our open space system, that would be...
That is remarkable. Appreciate you including the word hillside in here. Didn't see that. The only time you don't is when the discussion is about building on the top of the bridge. If I read this right.
If you find us something like that and send an email through Jamie to me or whatever, I'll try to...
No, but I think that that was the exception, don't you? Because I misunderstood what it was about.
In B, under the blue line, I like the idea of...
Page?
35, page 35. Feasibility of increasing river access of Route 185 and not, we've been talking about that for a long time. Right, Alan?
Yes, we have.
Good. Provide a location for canoe kayak pullout near Simsbury Center.
Yay!
So we're talking about Flower Bridge?
No, could be. We've got, we've got the Boathouse, which is, I think, actually on private property. I don't think that's actually town-owned.
I get yelled at all the time.
Understood.
They mix that up.
But we also just purchased the property, which is the Moore House.
So...
I don't think we've, I don't think we have to be specific. The issue is a comprehensive look at that area because the Flower Bridge, I mean, people go there, they take pictures. All sorts of stuff that happens, but it's also very close to our downtown. So if people could go for a paddle and get out and have lunch or take a quick bike ride and come back, again, it's...
I proposed that at the open meeting.
We should definitely take out the...
People wanted to sit and contemplate, that's what seemed to carry me there.
Well, okay, so on item, on page 35, B2B. Well, okay, so on item, on page 35, B2B, is the verb provide the right verb there? Investigate? Pursue, promote? I mean, provide is, I mean, that's kind of a... So, back off just a little bit. Investigate, promote?
Investigate. Let's get it done.
Yeah, should provide.
I think we're close.
I assume we're rhexing a place to get our rhex out.
All will be provided for now. Thank you.
Again, the case is so specific that it's tied to Simsbury Center. It could be south of the Flower Bridge, it could be the Flower Bridge, it could be north of the Boathouse. You know, the town owns all of the land just north of the Boathouse. So, you may not have access to the Boathouse, but you then own the next literally mile along the river. And then north of that is state land. So, you do own a significant gap between town and state as you head north towards Grantby.
Page 36, any comments?
I thought you did a nice job outlining what you wanted.
On page 37?
Yeah.
Glenn, is this the latest and greatest open space plan yet?
We're using the same GIS vendor that the town uses, so I believe that we do have the most current data that they have.
Okay, because I thought the Simsbury Land Trust acquired the development rights. Exchange of properties for... In that triangle that's bounded between Corey Road and Terry's Plain that had been called Pharaoh's Farm, wasn't that transferred?
Well, the triangle between Corey and Terry's Plain is shown as public land here.
Yes, I thought that, I thought it'd be parcel that got transferred to the...
So, in terms of the layering on a GIS map, we set up on kind of a hierarchy of layers. And so, if it turned out there were development rights and public land, the public land would override the development right preservation, if you will?
Oh, okay, where do I need, okay.
So, it's just a mapping convention that...
Because I thought that the Land Trust, the Simsbury Land Trust got that.
Holly, sorry. That was sold to Churchill Farm, and then the Land Trust purchased the property, the development rights. This map probably just didn't reflect that change. That change is fairly recent in the past.
So, the town?
Two years, yeah. So, I mean, this may be a little, that map may be a little dated in the sense of the many details to that.
So, you're saying that the town sold the land?
Yeah, maybe.
The sold land, and it was very complex.
That's how I ended up at Simsbury Land Trust.
Because then we've received some of the reports for the conservation, the conservation reports.
It's a little nitpicky, I just...
No, but I think...
How to represent.
I think it's important that the map should be as correct as we can make it.
So, I mean, I think it would be dark green in there, but I'm...
Hatched.
I would put that, put that too.
38. We talked a little bit about adding item C, 1C.
We decided we, it was taken care of.
I think the monitor enforcement was the part that Alan was questioning, which are the three?
Very sensitive.
Okay, 39, maintain and enhance community character. So, Glenn, you did something really that helped me. Somewhere in here, you talked about what the sense of place.
Yep, so I brought page 40.
Okay, is that where, yeah, that's where it was. I'm glad to have it written down. You know, I'm not quite sure if I ever, if I could have done that. Now, on page 41, we, I know, Glenn, you've made some comments about the relevance and the accuracy of some of these character resources. I realize that's a carryover from the 2007 plan. I think, you know, it's illustrative in one respect that there are so many. Okay, I think someone took a lot of time back in 2005, 2006 to put all this together. And I'm very impressed with the sheer quantity of items that are identified. If we intend to keep this, I would ask that you consider the format of the map.
I had trouble with that.
Yep, so do I.
And maybe it's because it's so difficult to do, I'm not quite sure.
Took me a while to figure out the solid numbers from, yeah. I did get that, I bet you. And then the key, I had to refer back to page 41 to see what each number stood for.
Let me ask the commission, what do you think? Is it important to identify these character resources?
I would like to add a couple.
Yeah, so I think what I'd like to do is suggest that if we can modify the title on the blue box on 41, 42, and change it to say, "Listing of some current and former character resources." And the reason is, is that, for example, there was a listing in here earlier than the numbers on the map that talked about tobacco barns that used to be on County Road. They're gone now. There's some on Hoskins, but I think those days are numbered there as well. So, the issue is, we really want to kind of celebrate, so, you know, there's some of them are shown on the map right now, but they may not be when somebody comes in at some point in the future. So, I think that that phraseology will work for us.
All right, and then if there's something you can do to...
You might have a lot less farmers down, not many farmers.
Well, I think we'd like to make, keep them all current. We don't want to lose any if we can. But I think the map could serve a useful guide. If somebody came in with a proposable project and the commission could go to this map and say, "Huh, item number 28 is on here, and I see that that's an aesthetic place, so 28 aesthetic place is the view of Barn Door Hills. Okay, let's make sure we preserve the view of Barn Door." So, I think it's helpful, even if it's not...
Can we add some? Or can I ask you at least a question? On the Hopbrook Brownstone Building, is that the mill that, where Mill Rights is located?
If I had put the list together, Holly, I could answer your question regularly. This is a carryover from the 2007 plan. My recollection is that the planning commission members at that time, working over the space of three or four or five years, put together this list as information. So, some of these I'm just, I've lived in towns since 1970, and some of these I just don't know.
It's like a building along the Great Pond, you turn left, there's a stream.
Well, could we just add the mill? Because that's an important building that I don't see down.
Take number eight, for instance, huh, right?
That was a question I had.
Yep, so that's under buildings. So, if we go to the map, we look at the legend. Buildings are in...
Yeah, that looks like it, yeah.
That's on West Street.
Right on West.
Right at that location.
Okay, there you go, so that's it. Could we just call it the Hopbrook Brownstone and Mill? I mean, it was brownstone, it looked not all brownstone, it's mostly wood, but Hopbrook Mill and Brownstone Building? On number eight, just to...
I have no objection to that.
And I would like to add, also number 17, the Courtyard Building on Jam Gallagher. It's a beautiful building, it's a beautiful thing. And there's been discussion to make radical changes to it. And on number 30, I'd like to add tobacco fields and barns, I'd like a slash dormitory. Before it fades into obscurity.
Maybe not fade, I don't think it's gonna... It'll fall out.
Okay, but it hasn't yet, and I'd like to put it on there, and you don't know.
You should take a lottery on which way it's gonna go.
Well, you know, it's the last building of its kind around here that reflects the kind of dormitory that Martin Luther King spent the summer in. And I, that's a pretty important thing to try to protect.
Structural integrity of that building is...
We might, someday, somebody who actually cares might write a check. But until, you know, I'm not willing to give up on the dream. I have a dream. That that building will do us proud one day.
So, Glenn, I...
Even though that's not the exact...
I understand the method you used. I think it was, did you make the map?
I believe the map was created as part of the 2007 P O C D, and so he just updated it based on my knowledge of town. Some of the barns that have since disappeared, the numbers were taken off, et cetera. So, it's not a total vetting.
So, I appreciate the fact that for the different types of places, buildings, farms, not only was the color change, but also the font of the number to try to distinguish one from the other. And I think the only thing I would ask you to consider is the orange used for farms seems to fade away on me.
Good observation.
Also, in the legend, can we mention that, like, where to find the numbers are on page 41?
41, 42.
41, 42?
Well, there's some issues with this.
Piece of brass?
Oh, the numbers on the farms are all off. Rosedale Farm is being shown where, I was gonna add J.L. Hall Farm, but where his farm is, is a four, and that says Rosedale.
Flamingo, Flamingo, George Hall, three, four, Rosedale. Rosedale's wrong, you're right. Four, five, Pick and Tatch.
And that's way, that should be where six is.
Six is town farm. So, one of the farms, you know what I think happened here? Yeah, so what used to be, I think, four was Dewey's Flower Farm. But Dewey's Flower Farm really got lost in the last 10 years. Did you buy that property? The Flower Farm's no longer there, so that messed up the numbering. See, we corrected on the list, but it doesn't look like we corrected on the map.
Okay, but I'd like to add one because then instead, could we add where four is, now, I see, that must have been where nine was. Yeah, that doesn't exist. Nine doesn't exist and it's been taken off. But four is the J.L. Hall Farm. Number four, right off the Terry's Plains? Nine was where the Dewey Farm had been, but that's technically still, it's still a farmland at the town home. It's just the building...
Is the correct name for four, J.L. Hall?
George Hall.
No, no, George is his...
George Hall is the one over on Old Town Farm Road?
I believe it was, I believe it's J., I could call and then ask. I think the initial is L., Joseph, J.L. Hall.
Just call Joseph Hall, it's gonna be George and Joseph.
Can I back up to the same old, same old on page 40 where it says, "Sanic Fields, the ridge lines and the river valley, can we include?"
I've already, I've got, I have it on number six, aesthetic places, number six? Is that what you were talking about?
No, page 40, the third bullet, uses the word...
I have it, yeah, no, I got that already.
Got that?
Yep.
And aesthetic places...
Is hillside your middle name?
It's just that you don't look at that little line at the top. Number six, under aesthetic places.
Yep, I got that.
So, eight should really be second, right?
On the farms?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what happened here, the number got out of sequence.
Oh, okay.
Once we put Joseph Hall's farm in, which is number four...
Right, then everything else...
Then everything else after that is fine.
But you have to move it all down. Because five is four, but it's six.
It's easier for me to change the text than to get the map changed.
Six, seven, and seven.
Seven is eight. Eight, what's listed is seven, okay.
I'll take, oh, I got it.
Yep.
Okay, page 44.
Well, the only thing I had, Mr. Chairman, on this, and Glenn and I talked about it, is one of the guidelines for community design, I made a recommendation, Glenn, to add some language assets alluding to the fact that the document is potentially dated and should be reevaluated and potentially outdated.
Because the community design guidelines are mentioned quite a bit in this document. If we're gonna...
And from a zoning perspective, they're kind of the go-to document as it goes to design and articulation of the aesthetics in the community. And some of the building architecture and other discussions there we're seeing are, again, showing their age.
So, I think the right place is on page 45, item number three, talks about planning update, and we should add a task underneath that, which would be a new A, which is, "Update the guidelines for community design." In that section, Glenn, B, C, I think that there's a typo.
Yes.
Just there, I got that.
What?
Well, some of the words I had to look up, Glenn. You were right.
Under A.
It was just raw luck.
Page 45, A, number two, where we're listing preserve the sinet, can we add tower of remains, like Hartman Tower? That's the, after the fire, that's the huge chimney above Terracille. Used to be five towers at one time.
So, what do you want to call it, tower of remains?
Yeah.
When you walk by, do you... Have you seen it?
Little farm.
Chimney it's got? You can see it from the road. Leaves are on.
Town ordinance to preserve stone walls on private property.
No, do it. Sometimes the walls aren't actually on the private property, they're sort of stolen the road right away. The question becomes one of the property owners think they own to the curb, so it becomes a difficult situation. Sometimes people are selling stones, or they're being used to build stone walls elsewhere. So, some communities have adopted stone wall ordinances to try to protect them. I don't know if it's an overreach, but I think it was carried forward from the 2007 plan.
You can sell your stone walls for $10 a ton, $10 a linear foot. They are, takes $10 to remove it, $10 to re-pallotize it, and they're sold for upwards of $200 a ton. And another community, for weathered wall stuff.
So, they can look...
It's a significant business economy association.
I'm not against it, I'm just surprised by it. Well, for preserving everything.
Simsbury has some walls, but they're not the traditional colonial community that every street you go down in the rural sections is lined on both sides by stone walls, or they're traditional two-rod wide road that is basically defined by the walls. You're seeing developers, as they do a subdivision, the first thing they do is remove the stone wall. And a lot of towns are conservative efforts to say if you're gonna remove it, you have to replace it or respect it. You know, if there was a rubble wall, replace it with a rubble wall. Don't replace it with a cup granite finished wall. You know, maintain the character. But it is a balance between public and private rights.
Anyway, it just says consider, so it's not... Under B, I brought the compromise here, okay? About new developments. Struggling for a word. I'd like to see if we could use the word blending with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Not match, because I've been convinced, you know, it could look like a warehouse.
So, okay, up to where you're at, which are you on?
Page 45, B.
B2.
Yep. I'm looking for some kind of language, not to match, because I got that wrong last time.
Although, is it compliment or comparable?
Reflect, complement, enhance, that's pretty much regular, or isn't it? Yeah, I think, reflect, compliment, enhance, that's pretty much regular, or isn't it?
So I, to me, I, I read compliment, compatible, and fabric, and I kinda get the gist that you're talking sort of a conceptual framework, you wanna be consistent with. So I don't think it's requiring rigid conformity, it's finding a genre and staying within it type of thing.
But, yeah, that's it.
Page forty-six. Anything else on forty-five now? Anyone else? Forty-six.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just back up?
Yeah.
On, um, page forty-five, one, A, and I get a problem repeating myself in a few weeks. Seek ways to incorporate public comment in the design review process. The design review is a peer review. It's not a public review of a design process. Again, I noticed, design review is a peer review, not meant to be a public process. It is not designed by committee. It is a, a group of individuals appointed by the zoning commission to provide a very specific task with review to architecture of a specific site as it relates to the design guidelines of the community. It's not a litmus test for the public, whether they like it or not. In essence, it's a, you could consider it a professional group of individuals doing a peer review of an architectural submission. So the comment is, seek ways to incorporate public comment in the design review process. The way it's set up now is that, that peer review is not a public process. In some aspects, the zoning approval process is the public process. If there's a hearing, help, in essence, hearings are public input, not necessarily a public process.
So you have a comment on that?
I don't remember exactly which public meeting it was at that we ran as part of this, but that came out, and I understand where Jamie's coming from, is that it's meant to be sort of almost a staff meeting type of thing, that the comments then go to the commission for a review. So I think the comment was expressed strongly, that people wanted to have a chance to participate. But I understand where Jamie's coming from, that this is like, almost like, let, let the design review make their recommendation, and then you can comment at the zoning commission or see what happens there, so...
I found design review open to public opinion. Doesn't mean they're designing. If you had a public audience portion of the meeting, say, by the way, when you're gonna do that, and that, and that, I hope you consider this and this.
You know, it's interesting, cause the language in here right now is, seek ways to incorporate public comment in the design review process. Maybe we take process out, and if the first thing on their agenda is public comment...
There you go. Then, but then they're not designing any.
Come out, because the material on their agenda hasn't been presented yet, so, you know, some communities do allow for public comment in being in agenda for items not on the agenda. So there is an opportunity for public comment, but not necessarily on a specific item. So the, the verbiage in here right now is, seek, seek ways.
If there were three applications in zoning that could refer to design review, if there was public comment, someone could comment, not on the three applications.
Other than the three applications.
Anything other than those three applications. The issue is, is sort of an application referred to, then if you're holding a hearing, you could potentially run amok of an administrative process of not providing your notice. And then, under statute, it's very clear how zoning works, it's very clear how planning works, it's not clearly defined of how a subdivision of one of those groups works.
I, I know somebody on a zoning commission in another town, and we've talked about this, and I brought that up, and she said it's up to the chairman. The chairman says there cannot be any comment on item that, about this address, because there's an application pending, and he simply wouldn't allow it. And if somebody started to say, not allowing. So...
Might I suggest we...
That takes a strong chairman.
Well, I think the concept might be worthy of additional exploration, so perhaps we change it to read investigate whether to include public comment in the design review process.
Okay. That, that's good.
Yeah, I'd be, uh, curious to know, do either of you guys attend the design review board meetings? And, uh, has this been a hot issue?
One meeting, one individual.
Cause I was approached by...
In eighteen months.
I was approached by a member of the design review board in support of this type of addition to the P O C D. So maybe that person was trying to, you know, reinforce what, what was said during one of the, uh, informational sessions.
Well, in general, the public does wanna have some input.
I, I, in, in olden times, it was allowed.
Dynamics of some other request for public comment, potential result from the decisions that design review has made over the last five years. And the way they have evaluated aesthetics in the community. So there may be one or two individuals who feel that public comment was allowed, it would support a view that the bar for aesthetics should be maintained at a level that may have been historically, but has it, has maybe slipped in the last five years. I don't think it's slipped in the last eighteen months, but perhaps prior to that, has slipped a little bit. So one or two individuals in the community may view that public comment will allow membership of the commission to feel stronger about requiring something more or better or slightly different, no one's being proposed.
What I thought I saw at a joint meeting with zoning was, um, I'm not, I'm not sure that commissions maybe including us are all that aware of what the public thinks about the decisions being made. They don't even know you're on a commission. So I think that that is a good way for them to become aware. Oh, people are concerned about that?
I've had, I've had members from zoning approach me and ask me whether they have to go along with design review's recommendations. And it wasn't because they didn't approve anything, it's because they're approving things.
Well, just let that rubber sticker question the fort.
So if they're approving something, and it wasn't to lessen the bar, it was to raise the bar. So just because they think something is good enough, and someone doesn't think it is, are they just the, the rubber stand of the design review? And I said, no, the design review makes a recommendation. You can agree, disagree, or differ from that. I think some of the answers is, is if we feel that design review didn't bring the level of development to the aesthetics that are in the design review manual because of the complexity of the commission that evening, can we, you know, bump that up a little bit? And it's within their ability to do that.
Okay, so let's change it. Come on, I like the idea, investigate.
It's a possibility, that's always controversial, but I don't know why.
I'm sorry?
Let's leave it open to the possibility of public audiences, so...
Okay, folks, we have a lot of pages to go through, we should start picking it up a little bit. Page forty-six.
When you say adopting noise ordinances, you're saying all over town, or just in certain, was it in residential areas?
Trying to speak of noise ordinances affects, there can be different standards for residential areas and commercial areas, in terms of decibel levels, night and day, there's different sound scales that occur. Noise can be one of the more vexing issues for enforcement, for, for staff, et cetera. But the tools really aren't that great unless you actually have a town ordinance, that you have police that are ready to go out there and, you know, decibel meter on your phone, et cetera. If we're gonna do anything about it, you need to kinda start with the local ordinance, this would be the first step.
Scott made a recommendation in, in discussion with Glenn to modify that language to reevaluate the need and or regulatory hurdles associated with the noise, the noise ordinance.
Left or right?
Who suggested that?
Staff.
It says adopt. There are regulatory hurdles associated...
Staff, I thought you said Scott.
Not Scott. Again, we're not, to me, we're not supposed to recommend adoption, we're at point to evaluate the need and or regulatory hurdles associated with the potential adoption of noise.
They're tough.
Typically, noise is regulated by the state, and it's enforced all by the local law through a police action. And if you adopt a noise ordinance, it may be detrimental to the performing ops and other venues that already exist.
Anything else on forty-six?
Just so the commission knows, uh, on page forty-seven, we talked in here about different types of historic districts, and I made a note to myself to add a sidebar to describe the difference between a national register, the state register, a local historic district, et cetera, and I think it'll help inform and educate.
Thank you, that's a good idea.
Forty-eight, number one, I made a note, is it worth putting, adding to A, men's subdivision regulations require consideration of historic archaeological resources, and can we, should we, could we add character places?
You don't think that's covered elsewhere?
Oh, defined.
You mean, uh, the character resources from page forty-one, is that what you have?
How do you...
Define character places?
I can determine that something's historic or it's a potential archaeological resource, how do I determine whether it's...
Page, it's on, it's in there on fifty-two.
You go on Mac for the list?
And those resources are the resources you referred to on page forty-one?
Yeah, I think...
You might need to, I would not have known that, that, like, that word resources.
I don't think it does.
Which page?
Forty-eight. C one A, how long is that, probably, C one A on forty-eight?
No, I meant, um...
Page fifty-two.
Fifty-two. He uses the word resources inside, and now that was specifically referring to that list of resources.
Does it refer to that list of character resources? I, I think it's the map, the scenic resources map on the facing page, I think it's almost all of the maps are in this section.
I think Glenn's attendant of resources that he brought in generally, river, water, stream, habitat, vegetation, buildings, those are all resources associated with the word and character of the community. That it, it's not singular in nature and easily identifiable.
And maybe we'll let this do here as an, just a broad identified chapter sum. It's this whole chapter, it's the whole concept of the character.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let me step back to fifty, any questions on fifty? So on fifty-one, Glenn, we have number four farm called Hall Farm, and we talked about Joseph Hall on the other one. We just agree on what it should be and have the same, both places, either one or the other.
Oh, I see, that's right, on, on this map, that's correct. Yeah, I think you were, we should add Joseph Hall Farm, just to distinguish it. I like how the ground shows how much active farming is still there.
I'm not sure it's totally up to date. Some of these are recently, they go, they cycle in and out, so, so I think all of them recently farmed, but not all of them farmed.
Fifty-two, fifty-three, so we talked about that. These lines, hill sides. You do.
Fifty-five, the building we were talking about, didn't I?
Yeah, exactly, I just saw that.
Did a pretty little... The discussion on page fifty-four about street tree plan? Maybe it says it in there, I can't see it, but, um, is there any kind of discussion about planting of trees where the canopy is high enough that you can still see past the tree at some view that you like? Is that completely unclear?
Yep.
So see? Some, some trees are obscure view from the bottom up, and some the canopy is up high enough that it does not obscure something you might wanna see. Consideration of that in trees or plant?
Staff is having a discussion with developers about that exact issue associated with establishing tree canopy along corridors in a manner that the first six to eight feet are what's called lended off, so that as you drive by, you have a canopy, but your vista is potentially maintained under your eye levels at about three and a half feet in a vehicle. And in most aspects, you will see under the tree two of you in the, in the background.
Should we mention that as something?
We have that ability within our zoning regulations to do all of this. And also potentially an example, I think it may be the trend in developments right now, if you're driving past, um, the shops and can, um, seems to be some developers are turning large mature shade trees into topararies. If you've noticed in shops at Farmington Alley, the shop, these shops...
My, it doesn't go past the dumpsters, I can see.
But look, they, those have all been professionally proven, including the top leaders of all the mature shade trees have that locked off. Late in Newport, on their sick awards and some of their, their, their Elms, American Elms that survive, but, you know, you're looking, you know, if someone did that to the sick awards in the town, they would have low-key topararies with five-foot around bases that were almost thirty feet tall. Those were at the intent of the shade trees. So again, we're, we're trying to work with our developer block.
Okay, that's on fifty-four, Alan. Okay, we switch gears a little bit to section eight. Nurture places with a sense of place. Now I get it.
Just to start some of the conversation, Glenn and I discussed a few weeks ago about the, the term nurture, and whether it's, you know, incorporated in, and strengthen, sustain, promote, elevate places with a sense of place. Nurture, nurture can mean allow things to allow people.
Could you, uh, read that list of, of words?
Strengthen, sustain, promote, or elevate.
Well, sustain, I think, would be...
Well, I can choose more than that.
I think it's all busy.
That's why I didn't pick one, or two. And again, and what Glenn liked to talk about is maybe under the overview, a quick sentence or two about the term nurture. What, what does, what do you mean as a planning commission to nurture places with a sense of place?
You could use all those descriptors to describe...
Terms to fall into the normative nature of nurture.
I love that.
I picked nurture because it sort of carefully ten, was the concept that I wanted to drag across, but clearly it doesn't resonate... I picked nurture because it sort of carefully ten was the concept that I wanted to try to across, but clearly it doesn't resonate. So I think it's, the easier verb is just promote.
Nurture's fine, I thought you were going to add this sentence where you add throw in all the verbs, and they get it.
I think, you know, in one respect, I like it because it's a different, different word compared to the other section where we've used maintain, promote. What else do we have? And then, explain it in the introduction. Okay, fifty-five. Fifty-six.
Again, on those pages, I had a couple of word smithing items and form stuff, and then the other discussion was on page fifty-seven. The discussion was the use of dots versus more irregular shapes, so I think we had discussions with the commission last week about the potential of just identifying Weetog Center. And I had discovered where was Weetog Center, if we're just identifying Weetog Center, are you negating the Route Ten corridor from Weetog Center to Avon? So Glenn and I actually talked about using just some slightly different forms and shapes and characterizations for this map.
Okay. As you know, I'm a big proponent of sinsbury center first, so I like the fact that whether it's just geographically, you know, that oval is over what we consider to be sinsbury center, but I think it gives the impression that it has priority. Or the other.
And it's in the center of the map.
Yes. And is there any significance to the dotted lines, you know, the circles?
Just as a geographer, it sort of intrigued me that the places sort of evolved for historical reasons in terms of separating distances between them, and actually I sort of went back and looked at the separation distance from sinsbury center to Hoskins, Weetog Center, West sinsbury, and Terriffill, and they all sort of fell within these sort of radius, and it was just sort of a revelation in my mind after living here for all these years, this was the situation. So, it's a graphic element on here, if you think they're distracting, they can come off, what's your thought?
I like it, because it looks like a target, and the center is the place we care most about, that's what I like about it.
I thought it was nice the way you had that.
It's worth more points.
Cool darts, is that what you're doing, like, cool dart?
And it's not for nothing that Weetog and Hoskins are pretty much on that radius, you know, centers were defined by how far a person could walk back in the day.
Right. We'd also talked about South Weetog.
Yeah, I think, so, this chapter is broken up, as in, we sort of set the basic parameters about the importance of sense of place, and then the hierarchy, we go through the sinsbury center, then Terriffill, then Weetog Center, West sinsbury Center, Hoskins, and then we come back to the Route Ten corridor at the end, and that's really, I think, where the South Weetog discussion comes in. So that is back on page seventy-two through seventy-four. So it says on seventy-three, it says Avon to Weetog Center, we could call, we could change that to simply say South Weetog, but the whole idea was between Avon border and.
Right, but just considering the development that's going on, right at the Avon border. You know, that's going to become its own neighborhood. Someone's probably want to hear the name.
The discussions we had with Glenn looking at the Route Ten corridor, you have the Avon Town Line to Weetog Center, as shown on the map, the red dot, and on this, this is kind of the map that needs to kind of hone in on, you know, what does the P O C D say about Avon to Weetog? Weetog's easily identifiable, this is the corridor, and then we were looking at sinsbury center, and then we have, in essence, a gap, and then we have Hoskins, or I call the Hoskins north, or Hoskins north along that, that.
Or North Town, I like to call it.
North of Hoskins, you can't just, you know, sinsbury doesn't stop at that green dot, there's, and to your point, Weetog doesn't stop at the red dot either, there is something, potentially the economic engine of the community growth is in the southern portion, once the southern portion's built out, we'll either move back to the downtown or hop it and go north, because that's where the available land will be. The plan was just, I don't want to say a little light on that, but not clear in that discussion. And Glenn and I had, you know, as we went through the section, had comments of where we potentially could modify the language a little bit to enhance that discussion.
We should have put it in the talk about this in our last meeting, right?
Yeah, so my notes on seventy-two, for example, talked about that strip map was not working for anybody because it's too small to really read, it was meant to be an illustration more than anything else, but the comment here was to blow that out, make it a two-page map so that the more the detail becomes clear. And I have a note to use consistent terminology, so the question is, I either, you may know this on the map on page seventy-two, that identifies segments of the corridor, South Gateway, Weetog, mixed commercial, historic industry, housing, town center, Green Corridor, North Gateway, either I take those off because those don't tie to our policy discussion, or I change our policy discussion to reflect what the corridor map had, so I haven't figured out what I'm going to do yet, but I'll make it consistent in one way or another.
We skipped a few pages, can I?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Page seventy-three? I mean, while we're here.
Yeah.
Where it talks about retaining Route Ten, number one, is it two-lane roadway to the extent practical and feasible? Can't we reference the Route Ten corridors then? As outlined by, as suggested by, somebody ought to look at that thing.
Glenn, we. So that was in our discussion for records.
Well, it says it right on seventy-two, refers to that, doesn't it? This, due to congestion and other issues along the roadway, this quarter was the subject of.
Is that the same mark? I don't remember that being the Crog.
I mean, anytime you get, yeah, so the funding, I think, came through D O T, fumbled through Crog to the.
So we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, so the cost of the needle study, it was done every time.
Right, so you're saying it's not necessary to mention it in number one, I don't see why.
No, I'm actually looking at pulling out number one because number one is simply in the discussion box for Avon to Weetog Center, and I think realistically what we're talking about is really the entire corridor.
It is.
So I think it needs to be called out and say, sort of, you know, corridor Y.
We can get back to fifty.
Yep. Yeah, we might, so we can jump past sinsbury center, which I know is.
So fifty-eight.
On fifty-eight, the only discussion we had is potentially showing the concept plan from Fort Gerard site. Because the comment is, although limited development has occurred since very center, the community remains optimistic that a vision and aspiration expressed in the shiret will be realized. One of the primary results of the shiret was the vote by Mike Gerard to hire new studios to develop a concept plan on his Iron Horse site versus just kind of doing a conventional forty-lot subdivision on quarter acre lots. And I was able to push that through the shiret language.
I think on page sixty-three, the shiret illustrative concepts, top page, or top illustration, that shows.
That shows what the shiret envisioned, but we actually have a vetted concept plan by a developer.
Yeah, so I guess my sense is, I think on fifty-eight, I'm okay deleting that fourth paragraph, because it does appear that things might start warming up a little bit in sinsbury center, so we don't have to beat ourselves up that not a lot has happened over the last couple of years. But I think we either go with the shiret plan or not, so I think the graphics on sixty-two, sixty-three are the shiret plan, that's what came out, that's what we showed people, and so people are going to come up with their own plans, their own interpretations of this, but if we try to Photoshop in other plans along the way, it's kind of.
I think maybe confusing.
I think, this is what the shiret outcome was, show that, and I think from what I've seen for the sketches of Mr. Gerard's plan, it picks up a lot of these elements, it's slightly different, but it's reflective of what came out of the shiret, so I think we're good.
But the statement on fifty-eight, as it says, if no movement has resulted with the shiret plan, and that is incorrect.
Which is somewhere taken out, Jamie? Fourth paragraph in fifty?
Which paragraph are you referring to, Jamie?
Fourth paragraph on page fifty-eight? Or third, if you don't count the first sentence.
Yeah, that's the shortest paragraph in the entire plan. So I think the paragraph that begins, although limited development has occurred, should be deleted, yes.
Yeah, or say, it's also getting you bear food or something like that.
No, I think this, don't, that's, you know, don't need that kind of statement, just.
See on page fifty-nine, B four A, some additional enhancement on the Form Based Code, Jamie, I think you've been talking about that for a while, right?
The zoning regs for the town center pretty much take care of building size, mass, density, and all that stuff, it's not necessarily the same in all parts of the center.
The Form Based Code in the center deals with kind of bulk density and the components of the building blocks. It doesn't, it does not enter into building envelope. Talks about certain articulation as far as if a building's more than a hundred feet long, it has to be set back by feet, every fifty and twenty-five thereafter, but it defers any architectural element to the design guideline. And that's why everything's kind of lame, there's kind of, I was just in a session last week where the architects were trying to tell the urban planners to stay out of our business in your Form Based Codes, just give us the shoebox, we'll design the building. I'm not sure what, if they've ever sat on our side of the table. Not every developer brings an award-winning beautiful design forward, whether it's economics, price point, or their view of good versus a community's view of good in that sense. The also other aspect in some states as well as Connecticut is if you don't have it in your regs, you can't make a developer do it. So if you don't have architectural standards, how do you turn an application down when it didn't achieve the standard? So there's even a divide within the profession of how far a go within the standards, I think, given Connecticut's case law, that unless you morph the Form Based Code into a village zone, you have to speak to the architectural standards or make the design guidelines more current and relevant in association with the Form Based Code, so that you can drive the style and architecture back to your. And it can be an interpretation of a New England style, but it's not just a box.
Okay, the next few pages are excerpts from the shiret.
Yeah, the only thing Glenn and I talked about is format, giving, like, you know, is there an intent to be a graphic representation of the plan, or is someone supposed to read it, so I'll leave that for Glenn's part.
I'm on page sixty-four. Well, what, on E four, what is pedestrian precedence compared to pedestrian friendliness?
So based on our prior conversation, I have a note here to put a new sidebar on page sixty-four that starts to describe this, so pedestrian precedence would be a driveway that actually has a concrete sidewalk over it, and then that's showing that the pedestrian way, the concrete way, is the predominant or precedent feature, and then having a typical commercial driveway where the sidewalk stops and the cars have to run away, and we want to say to people, hey, pedestrians are a major consideration in what happens in our downtown area. So that was going to be a way to try to get to that issue.
Thank you.
I also asked Glenn and E to incorporate the term weight finding.
That's mentioned earlier, right? Way earlier. Okay. On the Terriffill, sixty-six.
The only primary comment I had, and Jermaine for a few of the next sections, that start off that Terriffill is a special place, Weetog is a special place, West sinsbury is a special. Unique? Well, it's just potentially whether you add a sentence or two that's, you know, there's, Terriffill is unique and special, but it's very different than Weetog. And whether, as a commission, do you have any conditional explanations? Or is the statement Terriffill is a special place and sinsbury deserves special attention? Do you feel that fulfills your purpose?
Terriffill is old, someday. That could be such a cold place.
Well, it has historic significance, but I think that would be true of all of those places, right?
I think it's unique in the town. Maybe we could say.
Yeah.
What makes it unique?
Because it's like a little town, it's like a little.
A rural structure, old houses, doorbells that you turn from the center of the door.
When the, this whole place.
Got a cool bar. It is unique in towns.
Not just in towns, it's unique.
I thought the point you were trying to get across was that it was the same header for each section, and we want to do it, I mean, I think the stuff below it supports that it's special.
Right.
So I think we're okay with the single line is.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, this describes.
To me, it was a little awkward, if, you know, I'll defer to your opinion of it, whether the support document in place of, you know, Terriffill is a special place, and you know, you talked about that as a, as a historic male site, a neighborhood. Terriffill is special and unique, but it's also very different from Weetog. Different characters. Weetog will never be as walkable as Terriffill. The pattern's not there. I mean, there's, there's many urban fabric in Terriffill. Doesn't exist in Weetog. There are sidewalks in Terriffill, sidewalks in Weetog that give you that pedestrian friendly feel. Alan, you mentioned the fact that Weetog could, you're almost losing the fact there could be some type of little mini Soho. Weetog, unless it's razed and rebuilt to replicate some Weetog, too. You could raise Weetog and replicate Terriffill in some urban form or pattern. Terriffill already has that fabric there. That's cool. So again, to me, they were two very different places. And again, to Gary's point, maybe there's enough information under those statements that clarifies the point.
Maybe we don't need the lead-in sentence.
No, I think Jamie's got a good point. I think we'd try to figure out how to not repeat the same verb and add a little something in that.
Tailor each location.
The historic urban fabric of the classic mill, town, village placement is.
With a original build.
You, you don't repeat that pattern of Terriffill anywhere in Simsbury. You replicate it and can in Unionville. But you don't replicate it within Simsbury.
And I also see to your point, Jamie, that West Simsbury Center and Hoskins has slightly different verbiage. It's, your really objection is that Weetog and Terriffill have the same word. We defer that to our wordsmith Glenn, how about that? He's done such a great job.
I have all my faith in Glenn.
Yeah, because effectively, that's what you did for the other sections.
And again, no, Glenn was on the tremendous time crunch to get to the first job.
Yeah, it's amazing considering.
Weetog Center, anybody?
One A, consider undertaking a special study of Weetog Center. What was that thing that took place two or three years ago?
That was just for the Hartford.
There was a Weetog Center, there was a Weetog Center. But I think it was only partially funded.
The key is it really kind of honed in on the crossroads, it didn't.
So we're talking.
Elongate Weetog, yeah. I give you, remind me, if you do too many things in isolation, you're going to lose sight of the bigger picture. That, to the point earlier, that with the development of garden homes and the Hartford property, that whether you like it or not, you're elongating Weetog, or you're actually creating a new sense of place. These places are, have their own urban fabric or own place-making capabilities that they become small centers themselves. Do a little matter. You know, maybe in P O C D twenty twenty-seven, that the redevelopment of the Hartford is, has a concentric circle next to it. So it's Weetog, LaHart, you know, Silverman or whatever, that's, then it's, Weetog South is actually something between Avon and Weetog. And that is the redevelopment of the Hartford site by the Silverman. Not quite there yet. The only other recommendation I made with Glenn is on page sixty-eight, C, with regards to Weetog, to talk about traffic and the potential improvements of one eighty-five and Route ten, and discussions on kind of road diet and, you know, just don't pave it for the sake of level of service A versus road diet, level of service C from F at peak times, but still meeting the needs of Simsbury and balancing that the four-lane highway versus something that's more meaningful to the character of the town.
Okay, page seventy?
Just one, is everyone comfortable with the term hamlet?
I think the conversation we had before was hamlet is not a well-defined term.
Someone said west, the hamlet in West Simsbury. Or is West Simsbury a small village like Gary?
More hamlet than village. Yeah.
More neighborhood, no, not even.
I mean, Glenn and I, you know, we had this discussion. We encompassed consensus on a new term, so.
It's not.
It's not, not self-sufficient.
Well, in the summer, it's always gets busy.
So let me do this. Let me figure out phraseology of what hamlet means. But in the sidebar here, because it's really pages seventy and seventy-one where we kind of use this phraseology, and to me, a hamlet is not, a village is bigger than a hamlet. A hamlet is sort of a small assemblage of buildings that create a sense of place, you know, you might be through it in an instant, but you know you were someplace.
A crossroads.
It's not just a crossroads, the hamlet doesn't have to be a crossroads. So actually, the part of West Simsbury Center isn't really a crossroads, it's between intersections. So, so let me see if I can find verbiage. If I can't find verbiage for hamlet, we're not going to go with a phrase that makes people uncomfortable. If I can find something that explains it, I'll go with it. If not, we'll go with village type verbiage.
Again, my comments just were that hamlet is a common English term, small village area like, these areas are like hamlets and small villages, but not in the classical sense. Because again, as Glenn said, though, but not at the crossroads, it's kind of these little elongated sections that, you know. And again, at some point, you may be comfortable with it and maybe with a clear kind of your phraseology of what a hamlet is within the community of Simsbury. It's a small village type setting, and that's the elongated near, near intersectional crossroads, but you have a few of these. The other term I did ask Glenn to add is at the top of page seventy, was this charm and ambiance being maintained and/or enhanced? Why not strive to make it even better than it is?
Okay, seventy-one? Seventy-two?
We did these two.
Yeah, we did, so we moved into. End three.
Mr. Chairman, just as you just, seventy-three, under the box B, that's where Glenn and I discussed a potential reference to the Route ten corridor style. On page seventy-three, because it says create a comprehensive plan on the section of the Hop Mountain Street between Weetogs and the Chris Center. Could be similar to the Route ten corridor, sorry, that was undertaken a number of years ago. Alan gets back to your point.
Can I make a suggestion?
Please do.
It is almost nine-thirty. I don't think there's anybody who are going to finish this tonight, correct?
Not based on our current performance.
At our current performance, it looks like we'll need two more sessions if we're meeting.
We did forty, we did forty pages.
Yep, and I was just looking ahead, doing the math, and I think if we can, I think the next chapter is a little short. If we can do that, we're at page eighty, which is about two-thirds of the way through, would seem to me, Mr. Chairman, does the commission have a meeting on the twenty-third? Two weeks from tonight?
Yes.
Is it fair, do you have things scheduled that I understand that you don't have any applications pending?
Not only that, these chapters aren't as controversial as interesting.
Yeah, but you know, we might be losing our edge a little bit.
Yeah.
Want to stop here?
Yeah, no, I would say let's stop here.
Faster than next time.
Okay, so I think. So just in terms of advanced planning, I think this is a good place to stop. I'm just moving my little sticky note over here. I think it does get a little bit simpler from here on, but I think normally, we would schedule our meeting date in June to be, so if we go to the twenty-third, it can turn around all of this stuff between now and then, and then within a day or two of that. Is two weeks enough notice to that meeting, or do we want to push our meeting back later, our public information meeting back in June at some point?
I would like to suggest we do that because so many, so many of the people in Simsbury are all tied up with the school, and the school won't let out until a few days after the next, the thirteenth, so I would, I would, from enough.
Well, I may have a conflict on that night, but I think I will work with staff to find a date in June, if you will, that doesn't conflict the school calendar, that the schools are kind of done, if you will, that things have kind of settled down a little bit.
Other than our standard meeting day.
They get out of school on the sixteenth. What I'd be worried about is if you go too late in June, people are on vacation.
But the next week after wouldn't be bad.
So the challenge is this, we either only have, we can start to announce the fact that the plan is, is this on the town website, Matt? I mean, we can, if you want, we can say, look, we are going on June eighth. And as soon as we can, I can, after our next meeting, I will update the draft, but people are going to start looking at the draft now. I mean, we're not fundamentally changing the draft, we're tweaking some wording. For the commission's next version of the plan, I will produce for you a red line version that shows the changes, so you can focus in, make sure we got that. Normally, the red line version is not made available to the public, so that they just see a black line version, but my note from our last meeting was make both, but we can post both online. And so if people want to spend time focusing on this draft and then just look at the red line version, I don't see any reason not to share that with them.
So what date are you thinking?
So I think if I understand correctly, we are going to meet on the twenty-third. We are going to coordinate for a public informational meeting on our June.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, thank you. And we will publicize that meeting, and we will get the draft plan updated out there as quickly as we can.
I think they can do it.
I think I can do it. I would like to have had more time, that people get a chance to kind of reflect and ponder on the plan, but I think again, we're not adopting that night, we're trying to get feedback from the community as to whether or not we're getting, what's the game we used to play as kids, warmer, colder? We're getting, we're getting warmer. And then I think, and we'll get together in July and make any tweaks based on our comment, and then head for a public hearing in the fall. So I think, I think that's.
And that would keep us on target.
Keep us on target, and I think as Jamie and Mike indicated, September was our target date for the public meeting, but actually, we have until November, which is our, and we can even slip past that if we had to. I don't recommend it, but I think we can stay on track and get it done before that.
I like the thirteenth.
Thirteen.
Even, even though it's a school night for everybody, okay.
But it starts the end of the year.
Well, it's, it's the last few days where, you know, all the parents are going out of their mind with every last little thing that has to be done.
As we search for a venue on the thirteenth, we will determine whether they will have any obvious conflicts with graduation ceremony.
No, that's not until the Friday.
Major award ceremony.
Something on that date. If we run up against that, I'll work together with Glenn, Chairman, and email to the commissioner seeking an alternative date. My suggestion would be that if we don't have any new applications, you don't have three meetings in June. You just move one of your options in June.
My only suggestion was if we just tell that the following week, then it's, it's right after school lets out, so I don't think most people are going to go on vacation the first week, but then all the parents can kind of sit down and say, hey, I'd like to make that P O C D meeting, but I don't know about you guys, but the last few weeks of school always fraught with a hundred thousand little details and deadlines.
I have no objection to doing it the twentieth, but it might conflict with.
I'll argue this, and I think. I can check with Jamie and Mike in the next day or two, and we can navigate our way to, are there any major conflicts, if you will, in terms of the schedule on date? If it works out that it's our normal meeting date, that's great, but it turns out that there's a train wreck happening and we can defer for a week or two, again, maybe we'll flip-flop around one or some of your meetings.
Well, I'm not saying it's a train wreck, I'm just saying, I don't know how many people still have kids in school, but it's pretty crazy, and I only have one kid. I wonder how the people with three and four kids.
From a timeframe perspective, you're seeking public input.
It's before that, so I think.
You're seeking public input in June.
Yeah.
You're, you're, say, three-quarters of the way through the process, if not six, you're still, you're seeking input in June. We still have all of July, that the, it's gonna, that draft's gonna be up on the webpage in your June meeting, and we can put PR stuff on the webpage, both from the Sleckman's office and the Planning Department's office with regards to accepting comment. We can potentially pre-announce, hold the date for the public hearing in September, and I guess still have a placeholder of September eleventh or thereabout. But again, if we hold to that September eleventh hearing, it doesn't mean you can't continue the hearing to another date, but we have to trigger the public hearing date based on a sixty-five day feedback comment from O P M and some other regulatory triggers. But sticking to the schedule doesn't mean at September eleventh or thereabouts, you open a public hearing, close a public hearing. You just need to adopt the plan prior to, I think, November seventh, but looking at the date again.
So we are going with June?
Thirteenth. So, see you two weeks?
Thank you, Glenn. And so we should plan to stay until we finish this?
Yeah.
I found that. Mine marks that nine, ten, eleven, and through the rest of the document, yeah. A much easier reading.
I have a lot of comments.
I didn't have a lot of comments.
Okay, we need a motion.
I love Twitter. I second.
So we have a motion adjourned, it's been seconded. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. None heard? None heard. Any objections? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.